So let we go ahead and start the April 25th meeting. Agenda changes, does anyone have any? Any changes to what we? What we have? And? Anyone in our viewing audience have any public comments? For non-agenda?
Too bad we're not technically enabled, so people can just text. I have a comment, we could do it all digitally.
That would be cool.
We could do it. The select board tried to do that, I don't think it worked a whole.
I can't imagine how that would work.
It's a good, yeah, it's a good idea.
Me either.
Good idea.
Sounds good.
They, what they did was they entertained emails and said if you, the town administrator will be checking her email, and if you email, you know, during a certain time, she'll forward your comments on that item. Again, I don't think it.
I don't know if it ever, yeah. So.
Sorry to interrupt, before we get off of agenda changes, were we going to bring anything up about a response from the planning commission to be sent to the DRB regarding Lot 15, everything that's going on right now?
Right, I, I think that we should, when we get to that, in other, other, other business, we can, you know, take a, take a, you know, feel the water, see how people are feeling about it, and, and go ahead and, and schedule that if folks wanna, wanna do that.
Yeah.
So, so that's in other business, and so our, our one and only item is talking about the, the village area design standards focusing on green spaces and I guess I'm, I'm looking at maybe, I, you know, I'd love to finish up by 9:30, depending how long our.
Not this agenda item, but the meeting.
The meeting, yeah. So we'll end, you know, 9:15 or 9:20 for, for finishing up with, with minutes and, and so on, so. So what have we got for, to talk about green spaces?
Well, so there was some interest at the last meeting in working on a, or seeing a map of our green spaces. I had intended to do a fancy GIS map and then realized that we actually have a lot of green spaces in the village, but they're not all, they're not all in public ownership. They don't all have the same degree of, of public use, even if they do have some level of, of conservation. So instead of doing a fancy GIS map, I just sketched one, which you see on the left there, which we might all want to stand up and get closer to, to look at. But in any case, I turned it on its side, the way John has got us all, you know, turning this whole, this whole project on its side. And just to be clear, the map to the right is at a different scale than the map to the left, but you can see some of the similar features. The one to the left is larger and zoomed in a bit more. But in any case, what I sketched was the roads, the public roads, sidewalks, which are a little hard to tell, they're brown lines on very frequently on either side, or one side of the black roadlines. And what jumps out at you are the green blobs, and those are the publicly owned green spaces in the village, at least the ones that I thought of, and, and looked at on the map. And so if we just, you know, take it from north to south, which is right to left on this map, Juprag's Park is sort of in the upper right there, and it's a very large green space, it's just outside of the village growth area, and there are lots of trails in Juprag's Park, which are not indicated on this map because it's off the map, but just know that Juprag's is there. The Bissonette Rec Fields also slops over to the west, just off of the map. And that, as everyone knows, is very specific in its use, it's three recreation fields and maybe someday a, a small playground area and a multi-use building for possibly restrooms and concessions and equipment storage. Moving on from there, on the bottom right, the northeast side of the village, we have the town cemetery, which I don't know if many people think of as a, as a green space, but it is owned by the town, it is very green. And it just happens to be quite beautiful, actually, because of the topography and some of the features in there, so.
Really nice walk, actually.
It is a really nice walk, and, and I don't know how many people actually use it in that fashion, but in any case, I put it on there for, for now. And then in the Commerce Park area, we have a very small sliver of green space that most people probably don't think of as green space, but I, my understanding is the town owns it, it's on the Mechanicsville Road side of the canal, right at the Commerce Street intersection. There are some trees, there's some grass, I never see anybody in it, it doesn't look like it's really there to be used for much, aside from just buffer green space. And then there's Lot 1, or what we call Lot 1 from the old Creekside Development on Farmall Drive, on the west side of Route 116, behind the police and fire station. And that area, as we discussed last time, and I lamented a little bit, is prime for what we've called for in the town plan for many years now, in terms of a town green. But it doesn't serve that purpose right now because it is just mowed grass with one large ash tree behind the police station.
It can also be very, very wet.
You know, I've heard people say that, I, I would challenge you to see it wet during a normal summer. I, I've walked it many times, and except in conditions like this, it's fine. When this, when this field behind the town office, which is also on the map, is right at the, in the middle there, along the Charlotte Road, when this field was being renovated, or not renovated, but reseated and sodded and all that, soccer goals were, were put up behind the police station and the fire station, and I don't know, maybe we had a dry summer that year, but there were kids from the Creekside neighborhood on it every day, as far as I could tell. Perfectly usable, they were not splashing around in bottles. In any case.
Well, and I've also been on it where it's, you're just sinking in, and it's muddy and saturated. So maybe it is just time of year.
Maybe it's a function of time of year, or, or how long it has been after a big rainstorm. In any case, so we have the rec fields behind the town hall, we also have the little green here on the frontage of 116, right on the corner, which is part of the town hall property, but was landscaped and developed as a, as a circular green space and stone wall, which does get used mostly by folks who are visiting town hall, or folks who are having events here, but sometimes by others, kids especially. And then the others that you see on the map there are Lyman Park, which is a large recreation field, behind Lampman's. The Memorial Green, right on the bend and Route 116 by Silver Street. And then the community school fields, behind the school, there's a baseball field and tennis courts and a basketball court, I forget if the basketball court, I think, is what becomes the ice rink sometimes in the winter. And some, sort of, associated green space back there. And then that large green blob on the south side, left-hand side of this map, is the La Platte Headwaters Town Forest, which is the northerly arm of it that reaches from there all the way down the Gilman Road. But this portion of it is largely wetland and associated with the La Platte River, and doesn't have a lot of use, aside from the potential for, I think, a vast trail, snowmobile trail runs, it may run on the other side of the La Platte, but there's been talk about rerouting it and, on that, on our side, the town side. So those are the publicly owned green spaces, if I missed any, let me know, and I'll run up there and draw it. In addition to the green spaces, you'll see just a very rough approximation of the trails that are on the Russell property that start from Lyman Park, as well as the connecting trails that come into the Thistle Hill Development on Thistle Hill Drive, and then proceed to the east and connect to Levine Hill Road. So you're seeing trails, sidewalks, and public green spaces on that map. So some of the things that I was inclined to draw, but didn't, because I was kind of curious how you wanted to see this and conceptualize it, were the Russell property itself, which is all of this and here. The Russell family was nice enough to grant a, a public easement along these, along this trail system. But this eastern portion of their property is conserved, so it went through the Vermont Land Trust and it's gonna stay in farm use. The public doesn't necessarily have access to it through a formalized trail system or anything like that, and so I, I'm not sure if you think of it as green space in that sense, from a community standpoint, but it's, it's certainly not going to be developed, and it does serve the public good in some ways. Similarly, to the west, which is a little outside of the growth area, but in this area, the Clark property, which used to be the, the Eddie Farm, is also a conserved property through the land trust. It's, it has to perpetually remain in agriculture, so it's not gonna see much in the way of development. And so again, it has some characteristics of a green space, but it's privately owned, the public doesn't have any access to it. What else do we have here? Within the Creekside neighborhood, which is along Farmall Drive and Frederick Way, there are several small green space areas that again, can't be developed, are there to serve the neighborhood. One of them is back here, the town used to own it, and we sold it back to the residents, and the town has a, a trail easement across it. One of them is in this little, the center of this little block, it's, it's a tiny, tiny little sliver that's sort of in between all the, in the middle of the houses. And the other more significant one is a large green space on the north side of this block, which is still controlled by the developer, not the neighborhood, actually, and as a part of the phase, the next phase of development that this developer has planned, to the west of Kenny Drugs, at least currently, the plan is to preserve that as a large green space, the, that lot would be filled and proper, properly drained, because right now it's a pond during, during really large rain events. And it would be replanted with trees and become a, a green space there. And it's unclear whether that would be private, or whether the town might have an interest in taking it over in some public, to, to make some sort of a public space. Similarly, up here in, in the Thistle Hill neighborhood, along Thistle Hill Drive, there are sort of houses in here, and houses in here, and they end right about there, they're all on footprint lots. And so the bulk of the land around these houses, especially the woods that climb up into these trails that connect with the Russell Trails, are, are sep, are a separate lot, or separate lots, that constitute green space. That, that can't be developed, the DRV approval set those aside as, as commonly owned green space for the benefit of the neighborhood, with public trails going through them. So again, not publicly owned, these actually have some public access through trails, not, not, can't be developed, serve some green space functions. I didn't want to draw them on the map, because I wasn't quite sure if they, if, if, if it is what you were, if it is what you wanted to see. I can go on. The, the NRG property here, they had subdivided to create three single-family home lots up at the very top of the hill, and just in the last six months, the owner, Jen Blomstrom, came to the select board and said, "I don't want to do that, I don't want those lots to ever be developed, I'd like to give the town a conservation easement on the top of that hill, so that they can't be developed," and the select board accepted that. So that's additional conserved space, not in the public ownership, but the town has an interest in it. So there's a variety of these sort of private green space areas, Lyman Meadows Condos has a pretty sizable one next to the rec field as well, that they don't do a whole lot with, except mow, but it's there. So I'm happy to amend this map, we can do it right now if you want, to add some of these private spaces, or not. I think that when you, when we use mapping like this to get a sense of the distribution and size of these various green space elements, it's important to know where they are and how big they are, but also what they're used for, and whether they're public or private.
So I, sorry. Oh, I was gonna say, I, I always thought like in Creekside, for example, that when they get credits, density bonuses or whatever, for giving green space in public use, I thought that was, became public land, but it doesn't, it stays private? It's just green space to get the?
It's at the discretion of the developer and the DRB, I'll sit down, so I'm in front of a mic. So in the case of that project, which was the Creekside Development, that you know, a new person to Heinsberg would never know it was Creekside, because there's no sign that says it, but it's on Farmall Drive. The, the landowner and the developer actually proposed to, to gift to the town two of, two parcels. And the town, at the time, said, "We're not sure if we want these parcels," and the DRB said, the town, you know, "We can't bind the town to take them, so we're gonna prove this project as if those are private, and if they should come to the town in the future, great." And then they did. So subsequent to the DRB approval, they did come to the town, both the one in the, on the west side near the La Platte, and the one behind the fire station. In other projects, like the one on Thistle Hill Drive, those common land lots, which are large, and largely wooded and somewhat steep in sections that the trails run through, the developer never, never offered those to the town, and I don't think the town ever expressed any interest in taking ownership of them, even though they were, you know, green spaces that were not going to be developed. So it really just depends on the, the nature of the project, and what, what the town's interest is, as to whether the developers even think of, you know, giving it over to the town, or whether the town wants it.
Alex, do you think it's worth, or others do? You know, there are significant sort of water courses that run through here, and they have setback requirements, where you can't develop. In the case of like the Haystack Crossing application, you know, it's proposed that there be walkways or trails or whatever.
Yeah, taking advantage of those undevelopable areas by having them be.
I assume they remain in private ownership. I guess there's a portion.
You know, there's, there hasn't been any discussion with that developer, or others, that I'm aware of in the past on, on on deeding property related to those areas over. With that said, our current official map, which I have copies of here, I can hand out, it shows a lot of these things. Our current official map anticipates something called riparian parks to be created in some of these wetland and stream buffer areas. The idea being that the town might take those over and utilize them for outdoor education and, you know, limited recreation to the extent possible, and wildlife habitat, that sort of thing. But yeah, I don't know that there's been any real effort to acquire those, or to negotiate those at this point.
I don't think in the short time you had, you got in touch with the Trails Committee in any way to get input from them?
No, because they've been quite active all the way through in terms of wanting to have trails connecting to the village and then going, coming out, you know, from it. So we have their vision in the, the Trail Network Vision Map, that's map 14 or 15 in the town plan that we just adopted, and they've got all of those sort of desired connections. I'm happy to reach out to them, Lenore is their chair, she's been away for a couple months, she's returning this weekend and hope to see her on Monday, so I can, I can touch base with her about that. I know that she was interested, the Trails Committee was interested in talking with you when you updated the official map about whether certain elements of the Trail Vision Network want to, want to become part of the official map. I think this commission was interested in, in blowing up the official map to be a town, townwide map, and with the intention of maybe having some of the more well-delineated future trails indicated on it. And they wanted to, you know, talk to you about that. I've been putting them off, saying, "We're not quite ready to look at the official map yet, you know, when we are, we'll get you in."
Good, good. That leads me to something that I noticed. All of this that's more focused is, is good information, but I would really like to see all of that at the scale of the entire village, with some fingers sticking out into the rural area, but with all that same information you've already drawn at this scale.
Well, that's fine, no, like I said, I, I think, I think I.
I think we want to see all of it, get up to CVU, you know.
So at, at the same scale, at the same scale as that map on the right.
Right there. And make, and maybe we get, not too elaborate, but make distinctions between private and public, bright green, light green, you know, something simple.
That's what I was hoping to get your feedback on, if I'm gonna make a fancy map, I want to know what you want on it, so if, if you think the private green spaces make sense to include with a different color scheme, I'm, I'm happy to do it. I think it makes sense too, John, I agree with you.
I think that's good information.
Is not a lot of green space around CVU?
Uh, there's a ton, yeah. All those rec fields, yep, and I've got those all.
I mean, they have the woods too?
I've got those all digitized and ready to drop onto the map, I just didn't yet.
Pour to your place, right?
Yeah.
Well, and then do you think, I mean, do you think all these buffer zones along waterways, even though they're in private hands, they can't ever be built on, I mean, it seems as if it's a, it's a private, depending on ownership change, I guess, if there is such a thing at some point, but I mean, when you start to see all of that, that becomes, you know, fairly extensive.
I'm, I'm happy to drop that on the map too.
There are tentacles, you know, that sort of link areas. Like right now, a lot of those green spaces seem, other than pathways and trails, they're somewhat, you know, you could say disconnected. But, you know, when you start to see things along Patrick Brook and other, other waterways.
Can you build trails next to the streams, or are you supposed to keep a buffer there?
You, you can, the regulations allow it, it's supposed to go through a conditional use review through the Development Review Board to make sure that that, the path isn't gonna have an adverse impact on critters and water quality and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I'd like, the thing that stuck out to me was if you, I can't see it on the camera, but the yellow line of the village growth area?
Yeah, it's very faint.
Within there, there's just, it's like a tiny little bit, so I'd like to see the private stuff to get an idea of what's in the village green-wise, you know what I mean? Versus kind of outside, I won't call it suburbs, but you know what I'm saying, outside the main core.
And with regard to the private, remember how I mentioned Gary Clark's Farm, the former Eddie Farm, which is to the west on Charlotte Road? Do you want to see, and actually the Russell property as well, do you want to see those spaces which don't have any public access, but are conserved and are gonna stay in agricultural use? Or are you really just more interested in, I don't know, other sorts of private green space?
Well, that's a good point, what are we, how are we defining green space? Is it anything green, or is it anything green that anyone can, can use, can go to?
Well, anyone can't go to places on private property.
Exactly.
That's why I'm, I'm sort of not in favor of including that, for that reason.
So you want to just, accessible?
Not point that out, that, oh, here's some open space.
Right.
Oh, it's private, right, right, you need to get permission to go there.
Exactly.
Well, like Maggie said, it just depends on what, what you're hoping to, what you hope this, this is a visualization exercise, right? You're looking at a map to help you get a sense of where green space is, what it is, so that you can envision what new green space ought to be and where it ought to be.
Right.
So if it helps you to visualize, you know, areas that won't be developed, we can put them on the map. If, if what you really will help you is just knowing places where the public can go and recreate, then I can exclude those, or make them very faint, you know? So they don't jump out at you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think when, when we talk about green space for, for planning, in the center of the village, we are, aren't we thinking primarily about what people can, what people can use? In different ways?
Clear over the public land, that's the strongest category of open space.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is that, you know, when you see, it's kind of like any sort of development proposal, even though it might be private land, when you can see sort of what's starting to shape, it's like these riparian buffers that somebody else owns, okay. Yeah, granted, okay, maybe we can't assume that they're publicly accessible, but they do sort of have an impact on being able to assess, you know, development patterns and how they should go, and and linkages, say for example, I mean, it may be a secondary color or something that's faint.
Yeah, why don't I, why don't I have a category that is, you know, undevelopable lands? And those would include lands that have conservation easements on them, as well as, you know, stream buffer areas. The flood hazard areas are a little bit different, because they do, you can develop in the flood hazard area under our regs, but you write about the stream buffers, those are off limits.
In terms of those conservation restrictions, does, is that opening for the future to go back and say, can we talk to you about having an accessible trail along the edges of your field or some? Does it give the town not authority, but kind of, we still have some responsibility, some involvement, a commitment between you and the town?
I don't, I don't know that that's, there's a consistent answer to that, John, I think it has to do with each individual project and the, and the retained rights or easements, you know, that might, within that project.
Deal was.
Yeah, so for example, the Clark property, I, I wasn't involved in the specifics of that conservation deal, but from everything I've heard about it, the only reservation made was for the property owner to have one additional building site. I don't think there's any other accommodations for public access via trails or the like.
Suggested or mentioned at all.
I could be wrong, but I think, I think it's.
That's what I recall too.
I think it's very much on a case-by-case basis.
Well, that, I, this is a little off topic, but when there is private, quote, green space, or what's required as a result of a riparian buffer, or something else, say like that 50-foot swath we've got along 116, does that then take that area calculation out of the density mix?
The only one that does under our current regs is the stream buffer area, that is a takeout.
Okay.
Everything else stays in, road rights of way, future paths, sidewalks, future roads, wetland areas, flood hazard areas, all those things are in the calculation for lot size when you, when you do density.
Okay, so not hampered?
Yeah, only the stream buffer areas, those, those come out.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll get to work on a, a more sophisticated-looking GIS, GIS map that shows what, what that one does, plus some of these other private areas, and like John said, at a scale that's the same as that map to the right, or similar anyways, so that you can see all of CVU and a good chunk of Juprag's.
And any connections that might go beyond those, just the shape of the map gives you a little bit of white space to stick fingers into the ag districts, whatever you see there.
Yeah, and I can.
And this is an existing condition map, we're not, we're not illustrating where we see needs and how we might want to recommend for the future.
Right, I think the, the official map, the official map does that.
Right.
Future community facilities are on there, and I think we're gonna, we're gonna be updating the official map, so we're gonna get there through this, through this exercise, but I'll, I'll put that together and, what was I gonna say? I'll, I'll, I'll certainly give you the, that Trail Vision map in the packet for the next meeting, along with this, this new map.
Maybe alert the Trails Committee that we're discussing these things, and they might want to have somebody come over.
I can let them know, yeah.
I'd say.
I want them to, I want them to be able to come in when they can have the most impact on what you're talking about, so.
Tell them what we're talking about.
To date, I've been telling them, wait a little bit longer until they're, until I give them a rev-. To date, I've been telling them, wait a little bit longer until they're, until I give them a revised version of the official map and maybe a townwide version, and then you can sit at the table with them and review that. This isn't that exercise. This is, this is like you said, John, more of an existing conditions exercise.
I'd still rather get them involved.
Yeah, I'll invite them along.
Earlier on than later on. If they have the desire.
But it's interesting looking at this and, and asking what's missing.
Yeah, ultimately, we're talking about what to include, but the whole point of doing the map is for you to look at it and have some light bulbs going about what do we need more of? Where should it go? Do we have the wrong, um, sizes of green space areas? Do we need more, you know, smaller ones or more bigger ones or, any, any thoughts?
Well, I, you know, the, just looking in the village center, um, I'd say the majority of what's in the village center is, is rec fields, which is great if you love soccer balls, um, but not so great if you want to, like, have lunch with somebody at a park bench, um.
Well, and there's no pickleball courts. I mean, pickleball is the sport for, the sport of the future, yes.
Apparently. Um, yeah, Meredith mentioned, where was it? And, uh, somebody wrote something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it made it into the town plan.
Our town plan?
I think so, yeah.
Say pickleball.
I think so.
That phrase is in there.
Well, anyways, I'm being a little cheeky, but your, so your point is, um, rec fields seem to be well represented, uh, and we have the Bissonnet rec fields coming online, uh, to the northwest.
We have rec fields, rec fields, rec fields, rec fields.
And when CVU enters the map, there'll be more rec fields.
Even more. Um, but looking for places, uh, again, I, I come back to where, you know, where, if you want to grab a couple of sandwiches and sit down outside in the summer and have lunch with a friend, where are you gonna go in the village?
Town hall green.
Where?
Memorial Green behind this, on the curve, fire station.
Yeah, right now.
So I'm gonna add one more thing. Have sandwiches and a conversation. Because if you're, if you're on lot one, unless you're directly behind the old police station or the fire station, you can't have a conversation. And the same thing for Memorial Park. There, you can't have a conversation.
So you know what it seems like we're missing? Although the town cemetery might be it in a way, is, is a, a more wooded park.
Right.
With, you know, possibly some play structures, but also pathways, benches, picnic tables, shade.
Shade.
Shade seems to be the thing we're lacking the most when I look at that is where, like you said, for sandwiches, but where would you go in the summertime, which is when we tend to be outside, to get out of the sun? All of those places have very little in the way of shade.
And in lot one, even if eventually it's, it's planted, it's, it will, it will be years.
Oh, yeah, it'll be decades before any.
Pretty wood, isn't it?
It is, that's true.
But this is where the bulk of the people in our village live. You want those bases, you know, fairly near at hand. Um, and they are, you know, predominantly sort of play fields, I guess you could say, and cemetery, I mean, people don't tend to go have lunch there unless they want to visit Ann Martha.
Play frisbee, catch.
What, how big, Alex, is, uh, lot one? You think that area that you've got designated?
It's like a acre and a half.
Okay.
And it, right now, I mean, it's bisected by.
Right, the, the new connector road, you know, split it. So that.
And the part that is to the left, it is at least planned for additional parking.
Portion of it is, yep. Yep, so it will be more.
The road that cuts through to the left was shown for parking and awaiting to do a park and ride. That would be, that would be a place where.
There'll, there'll still be some green space along Farmall Drive, but you're right, most of it on that side.
Green is gonna turn.
So that's a good point, John. So really, Rolf, it's that, like John's saying, it's that area to the right on the north side, right behind the, the police station, and that's probably only, I don't know, maybe three quarters of an acre?
Well studied during the, the whole.
Yeah.
Public facilities project with experts, drawings, a whole proposal, cost estimates and so forth for a way, a single way.
Yeah, I'll tell you from, um, from the reading I've been doing in the lead up to this meeting, um, I've been reading all the form-based codes I can get my hands on with particular emphasis on the green space elements. Uh, that lot one is the right size and the right location to be, um, you know, a, a green, a town green or a plaza, or there's a couple of different terms that the city of Winouski and Burlington and South Burlington use to describe, um, sort of medium-sized green spaces like that. It's, it's perfect for that. It's not going to become, um, the wooded park that I mentioned, you know, that, it's not big enough for that.
Or a soccer field or softball field pickup, yeah.
Yeah.
For the neighborhood.
You could throw a frisbee, you could have a pickup game of flag football.
Love to play on that uneven surface, you know, play with that.
There is, you know, there might be an opportunity in here.
And the Quim property.
To happen, but it's still not village, village center and.
Right.
Well, you also look, I mean, if I recall correctly, when, um, NRG came forward with their preliminary development proposal, um, there was some growth proposed closer to Patrick Brook, but there was still an extensive area, uh, I think deemed maybe too wet.
Yes, exactly.
He stayed back.
That, I'm not sure, you know, what, what that quote, wet land is, is good for, um.
Being wet.
But it's, yeah, being wet, it serves a function, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think, I think largely that's the function it would, it will continue to serve. To ha, to see it as a place for potential, um, civic space, I think, is unlikely.
Misguided, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think some of the conviction around, uh, uh, law one, or at least, um, I, I do remember, John, some of the, you know, preliminary plans for that space.
Yep.
Um, I think some of the hesitancy around our community probably is waiting to see what happens with law 15 in Commerce Park. I would imagine before, you know, if, if in fact that becomes a grocery store, then I think, just given location and the absence of other spaces like it, I, I think, uh, it might have acoustical problems, but I still think even some of those can be, uh, maybe not completely solved, but somewhat solved, um.
I think there's size issues also, particularly if our community grows, grows to the northwest.
Yep.
I think there'll be size issues just in terms of accommodating any kind of decent sized events that we would think of happening in a town green. Where, where do people, uh, park their cars? Do we break down their habit of not bringing their cars, but walking over to the town green? That might help. But it's still, it's a small space, uh, when, when you. I'm sure there are numbers out there that could tell us how many people could attend an event here and give us some measure as to, does this give us some future growth? Can, can we, can we keep growing, keep growing and have this location work for us?
As an aside, you guys, um, this is, uh, I think it's June the 8th in Bristol. Uh, the Historic Preservation, Preservation Trust of Vermont is doing a whole day-long workshop. Sounds pretty interesting to me. One of the major topics is, um, the merits or value of green space to your community specifically. Talking a little bit about town greens, but I think other things, so. If you have some time, it's a Friday, June 8th.
Yeah.
It's free as, no, forty-five dollars.
Yeah, there's a small fee.
But it's a day-long thing. I've been to some of their other events and they're, they're worth.
They're worth it.
So especially given the fact that that's a topic on the agenda, that may be something to think about.
What were you saying about the, the Hilltop of Upper Energy? Conserve or?
Conserve. So it's remaining in private ownership, um, but the, the development potential has been removed. So it was approved for three house lots up there and, and now it can't be, it can't be that.
I guess I wonder about that as a possible, uh, wooded park spot. I mean, I've mentioned, I feel like it's a fantastic view up there of the village.
Yeah.
Uh, and I haven't been in the wooded area, but.
It's a little.
It's hard to.
It's a little rough.
It's a hard to get to unless you're coming from, um, 116 where the ledge sort of comes across the road, uh, and you walk, you walk up that way, you're on reasonably, you're going up, but not as quickly. And I think that, I think that's a good idea, James. I think that the potential within the context of the development proposal that they put forward to have community space be up in there, um, is real. And, and in fact, if I remember right, their proposal did call for a trail network in those woods, uh.
Don't they already have a trail that goes up there?
I think so, yeah. I think they've cut trails for the benefit of the employees and they've allowed CVU students to, well, and other people to run across the meadow portion. Um, my only concern with that is that it, it tends, it, it looks and might feel a lot like the trails on your family's property, which are amazing, um, but are, um, not as accessible to everyone and, um, you know, you sort of have to put your hiking boots on and go, or your shoes on to go do it, as opposed to a, a typical community park where you can park on the street and, you know, walk in a few steps and there's a picnic table in a shady spot and a place for your kids to play or your grandkids.
I don't know why we don't take more advantage of Braxford.
To, to serve that need.
Got a huge field out there. I mean, you got.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've got the woods on one side, big field.
Well, part of it is the.
Theater up there. I mean, you could.
Part of it's the proximity. We don't have access to it from the library because we've never been able to negotiate an easement with, uh, the owner of Travias, uh, because the town land is right, right behind, uh, his property and there's a logical place to get through there. Well, there's still, there is a place to do it, but in any case.
What about the sidewalk going past Jiffy?
Right, so that would have to be extended, um, quite a distance to get to, uh, the Japrags parking lot.
Is there room along the stone wall by, uh, what's his name's house, the fireman?
Brad Wainers.
Brad Wainers, is there room?
Yeah, he sold his house.
Whatever that, whoever owns that house is there.
It is. Unfortunately, the, the terrain climbs pretty steeply after that.
Right.
Yeah, but I don't know how much it would take to make it not so steep though. I mean, I think, I think they used to dig out of there, I believe. Used to be like a dent or something. I mean, I think it would be that hard.
Yeah, there is.
When you're going up that hill and turning, right, right there, the hill when you go up and, and make a turn and then the parking lot?
Dug out, I believe. I mean, I wouldn't think it would take.
On the north side.
I mean, it's, it's a nice park and it would be good for town and community facilities, but I still don't see it as part of the village. I can't see walking from here to Japrags for most people, you know?
Even if we manage to put in the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Yeah, this isn't, it isn't a, you know, half hour lunch kind of thing.
But it would be a great place to utilize, you know, like we do.
It is right now.
Stuff, I think you could, bigger space, you could do it.
Yeah.
Right, concerts or what have you.
Yeah.
Yeah, some kind of event that features Japrog Park and what's there.
Well, because it benefits from not having the road noise issues that Maggie was talking about. Um, for sure.
Trace Potter could.
But I, but I think the point, Dennis, is that it wouldn't, it wouldn't serve in the, uh, as Jeff said, as a place for people to walk to or, you know, go.
That's lot one.
Yeah.
I mean, of course, haystack, guessing we're gonna have green space there.
Well, so that's, that's a good point. The official map right now calls on there to be like a two and a half acre park right in the middle of that village northwest district. The select boards, when this got adopted in 2009. No, 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 it's meant to be a publicly owned park. No.
Have they proposed a publicly owned park?
Um, essentially, yeah. They proposed a, a, a large green and the assumption is that the town would likely take it over, um.
I just think in the village, it's gonna be hard to find a place you want to have a big event unless you do something at the school or something.
Which is what we do today, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Or maybe the, the rec fields, but I don't know.
The Bissonnet rec fields, but I'm sure those are gonna be maintained to where you're not gonna be wanting a lot of people turning around.
Well, I think, I think you're right, Dennis. I think what's been proposed on, as part of the haystack project could serve that function if.
And then they would, they wouldn't be very far from Japrags Park.
The people who live there. Yep. Yep.
Cause I mean, there's, out, like, you know, the people outside of the village do want to go to public spaces too, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. More people live outside of the village than in it. So, uh, in a rural community, you always have to plan for how you're gonna, um, bring people in and give them, give them places to go.
Should just be more utilized, that's all. I think you could do a lot, you could do a lot there.
So, Hysberg Center, um, part two. Their open space is just that wet area on the north side of Creekside?
No, they've, they've proposed, um, another smallish, uh, green space on, at an intersection. And then more significantly to the west of the growth district, which is hard to see on the yellow highlighting there, um, the property extends, you know, for hundreds and hundreds of feet, uh, back to the La Platte. And all of that is flood plain and outside of the growth area, outside of the sewer service area, and they've proposed all of that to be open space as well, potentially for continued ag use, which is what it's, what's happening there now, or some sort of community use, um, with a trail and maybe a community building of some sort. So there's, they've proposed several different open space elements in that, in that, uh, phase two project.
He has an empty lot too somewhere in the middle there. I can't remember where it is, but.
Yeah, it's the one I mentioned on the north side of Farmall Drive or Frederick Way, actually.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
That would be, uh, that's not shown on that map, but would be a green space element. Yep. And that, that's a pretty sizable one.
Still in his ownership. I'm not sure what he plans to do with it, but I think it's probably open.
He plans to fill it, uh, deal with the drainage issues because that's a real problem and then replant it and have it remain as a green space for the benefit of the neighborhood.
Have it become a green space actually?
Well, it really is now. I mean, the kids play in it and unfortunately, it's just not usable when we have, when it's wet like now or in the summertime after a big storm, uh.
So, so is this leading into the designs, uh, maybe we've been talking about the design standards, Maggie, that's on the agenda in terms of open space? Are we gonna try to set out some particular parameters with that? Is that?
We can do whatever you like. We've, we've got the maps, we've got, we've got, uh.
Yeah, my thought was that, um, I have some direction on how to refine the map so you can have it for your discussion at your next meeting. Um, and my hope was that I was gonna hand out to you, like, here are the best green space design standards based on all your discussions and what I've researched. I don't have that. What I have is my own sort of ideas on that and I need to read three more communities' form-based codes before I feel like I, I have all the research done. South Hero has something really good that I haven't had time to read because I've just finished Jericho and South Burlington, Winouski and Burlington. And whatever you do, don't read the Winouski or Burlington's form-based code. It's really hard to get through. Colchester's for Severance Corner and Jericho's are much more approachable. So maybe I'll send you some links, but what I'd hoped to do tonight was to hand out you, hand out to you, here's the standards that you should talk about and see what you like. So I don't have that. I apologize. What I have are some ideas and I thought I could just run through them verbally, if that's all right.
Could, could, before you get that, could you say again the ones that you've talked to?
Yeah, so I've, I've read, uh, now the Burlington form-based code for their city center and waterfront. Winouski. Colchester, which is specific to Severance Corners. Jericho, which is just for their sort of underhill flats area. And, uh, the ones that are still on my, uh, list are South Hero. Um, and actually I've looked at Brattleboro as well. It was some time ago. I need to sort of look at it again. And then finally my. And then finally, my, my uh former home community in Westford has some code that uh is worth looking at.
Okay, great, thank you.
So you're gonna toss out some ideas?
Right, so here's what I was thinking about, um uh. Categories of sort of design standards. I think that for green space, we care about quantity. I E. we need to require some. We need to make sure that we're getting some, and there's different ways to do that. Uh we can, we can have minimum amounts tied to percentage of parcel size being developed. Tied to the number of residential units being proposed, tied to the amount of non-residential square footage being proposed. Um it could be more geographic in nature, certain amount per block. Or per unit area in a, in a larger development. Or tied, or we could just map it and put it on the official map and say, these are the green spaces uh within a street network that we're thinking. And you will, you will provide for them. Um South Burlington's city center form-based code. Um has some numbers where they, they have minimum area requirements for civic space. Um theirs, I believe, are based on the number of residential units or non-residential space being created. So that's one category is just quantity. Gotta have some, how much do we need? How do we define that? Another category is uh the quality of that space. I think there's been a lot of concern here in Heinsberg that the green space that we're getting in development proposals tends to be the leftover land. And so Winuski, for example, has pretty clear regulations, think, no, maybe South Burlington, sorry, getting them mixed up. That uh these green spaces that are created for civic purposes um need to be on developable land. So not land that it is uh constrained by wetlands and floodplain and stream buffers, but actually is buildable land. Uh I think that the quality of it in terms of these design standards should talk about um the minimum size. You know, these very small sliver green spaces, I think we've had some experience, don't necessarily attract the public. Um that area behind uh or, or interior to the Kenny Drugs parking lot is the one I'm thinking of. Uh where it's just too, it seems like it's too small. Um uh and.
Talking about the pocket park?
The pocket park, yep.
I've never seen anybody sit on any one of those benches.
I've sat on it.
I've sat on it and, and thought, who would ever sit there?
So Winus- Winuski has a uh a length to width ratio like we do in um. In our zoning for the creation of new lots where they say it can't be any more than a one to five ratio length to breadth. Um in order to avoid these long skinny um civic spaces. Um so I think some design standards on the quality of it with regard to its size, but also its shape. Um I think it's also important, and I'd, I hate to pick on just that one green space, but it's one of the newer ones. Um there's gotta be language that restricts where the placement of utility cabinets and infrastructure. Where those are in relation to the space, either to prohibit them from the area that's gonna count towards the minimum green space, you know, that has to be created. Or some kind of guidance that says you can't have them in there, but if you have to, they have to be in the perimeter and screened. And they don't count towards the minimum size, or something like that, because as you all know, that area behind um Bristol Bakery. Um it's kind of replete with uh electrical transformer boxes and other utility infrastructure that.
Where else would they put it?
Well, there are ways to design a development that um if, if they, if they have to meet our standard for the creation of a certain space. Um and they also have to meet Green Mountain Power standard for where they have to put things, that they'll, that they will serve both masters and figure it out. If we don't, if we don't have that requirement though, then these, these pieces of infrastructure are gonna pop up in the middle of these spaces. Or anyway, so I think that, I think that's a reasonable design standard to craft. Um I think that location is another one that a lot of these other communities have keyed in on. So they need to be in um prominent locations. And Rolf, you've mentioned this with regard to some of your thoughts, I think, on the Heinsberg Center Phase Two project. Um where uh you want them to, you want them to front on public roads. Um you want them to um to be in places where the public um gravitates to. And also where the eye tends to see uh and not hidden behind buildings. Or um in the back of a neighborhood uh and not in a prominent location.
But I think, talking about saying that though, about always fronting on public roads, I'm not sure if I like that. Because actually where that park is that we're talking about isn't a bad location, I think. Because it, there is, you know, it's centered around the parking lot, which I couldn't see it out on one sixteen. It would, it would be back to what Maggie was saying about Lot One, it's too noisy.
Yeah, but I think for a true, or truly a civic space that people feel invited into and feel like is a part of their village fabric. They have to be able to see it as they walk and drive around the village. And Lot One, you can see it. It's there. If there's something happening, a farmer's market or a band concert that nobody can hear, cause the traffic noise or whatever, you know, you, you see it. Whereas these spaces that are tucked away, I think, become somewhat invisible. You guys get to decide whether this becomes a design standard. I'm just giving you a suggestion based on what I've read.
Not a bad location, but okay.
If it were bigger, I think it would be.
Yeah, it needs to be bigger. I totally agree.
Baker, you know, it'd be great to have outside space.
And the drug, drugstore. I mean, sometimes people maybe go in and to get a prescription and they might have to wait and they can go out there and sit. I mean, I can, but it isn't big enough. You're right. I agree.
I, I also think that the landscaping is horrible, nonexistent, worse than that.
It's dying.
Besides dying, right.
It's dying.
There are tiny little hidden places all over urban areas. The best examples, of course, are in Paris. People love them. You wanna go into a place, people learn about where it is and they don't have to see it. You know, you know what I'm saying?
But they're shaded in their.
That, that space behind in that parking lot area, um it, it was designed by a landscape architect. It wasn't just thrown together by.
But it's not maintained well or something.
Well, that may be true. It's well planted. It has a lot of vegetation in it.
Not growing.
I think the problem with it is that it checks all the boxes for, you know, number of plantings and shrub versus trees and all that. But it just doesn't have any soul to it. It doesn't have a, a creative flair like the places you're talking about, John, in Paris. Or one of my favorite places they tore down on Pine Street. Um I don't know if you guys drive on Pine Street at all, but near where Arts Riot is, um which has become a bit of a clubby sort of a place. Just to the north of that, um there's a building that they.
Used clothing store.
Yeah, and maybe a record store or something like that. And in front of that building, just in the last year or so, they ripped out a whole bunch of landscaping. Which used to be like a little streetside pocket park and it had what was very mature shrubbery and, and trees. With a cool sort of serpentine path and artwork in it with benches. And it was a tiny little thing, but I remember going down there. As I spent more time in Burlington and thinking, this is such a cool little place and, and it's nice to sit in, it's shaded and it's sort of tucked away. And it's right on Pine Street and yet it was neat. Um and I think that's what that spot next to Kenny's lacks is some sort of interesting flair. Uh 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 together with more mature vegetation that would provide greater, greater shade.
Public art, you know, if they're suing for it, but anyway.
Um so on the location side of design standards, um I, I think I already mentioned this, uh proximity to uses that generate or attract the public. So again, having a civic space tucked away somewhere at the, at the back end of a development. Um is not as good as having a civic space that's near a restaurant like Bristol Bakery. Or is near a sort of a higher density residential area. To, to think about placing a civic space next to a industrial park. Not a good idea, right? Lots of people might drive there to work and then drive home, but it's not a place where community sort of gathers. Um so I think that's a reasonable design standard as well. Another, only two more categories, um connectivity, um. Having civic spaces that are, that are in fact connected to the surrounding uses and, and other sorts of uh green spaces or infrastructure, I think, is important. So we need to make sure that these places are places people can easily get to and they're not on the periphery that a sidewalk will go to someday. But doesn't exist today. And so Japrag's is a case in point there, right? It's a, it's a huge town-owned property with lots of potential and kinda tough to get to unless you're in a car or a bicycle. Um uh and then the last category of design standards that I was scribbling uh madly earlier this evening was features and amenities. So I think every green space has, may have a slightly different function. But the more generic types that um are out there, at least that these other communities are planning for. Talk about minimum num- amount of seating within the green space areas, so that there are the requisite number of benches, picnic tables, what have you. Um tree plantings is sort of a given. We've talked about that. It's, it's when these, it's when the canopy overhead matures. That these places turn into real um livable spaces. That's the controversy that's going on in Burlington right now. Over their, their plan to re- rehab City Hall Park. And people are, certain people are somewhat apoplectic. Because they're talking about taking down a whole lot of trees and the attachment that people have to trees is pretty amazing. Um so having them as a part of these green spaces seems like a no-brainer, but, but we should plan for that. Um. I think I already mentioned sidewalks or paths, but not just connecting these spaces to other places, but within the green space itself. So that, that it's accessible. We have an aging demographic. We can't assume that everyone's gonna be able to just, um you know, hike up a slope. Or hike across uneven ground. Um so we should plan for that kind of hardscape infrastructure within the, within the green space itself. Um and we already mentioned this, but uh something that provides visual interest. And, and, and um creativity. So like we talked about with these other spaces, public art. Fountains, although that probably isn't such a good idea in our climate. Um I'm not sure what else. But just something i- innovative and creative that draws people and makes them think that it's an interesting space to be in.
Should, should there also be a category for maintenance viability of the plantings?
Yeah, I think that um, yes, and, and the housekeeping changes that you just sent to the select board have more express language on that.
Okay.
Yeah, we did just.
What?
The maintenance of those sorts of, in our current regulations.
Yeah.
Revised is.
We'll have more teeth for that if the housekeeping changes pass. But rest assured that last fall, our office um took an, a greater interest than that. And we sent letters to all the commercial property owners saying, we're, we're taking a second look at, or maybe a first look at all of your approved landscaping plans. We'll be back in touch with you in the spring. Um but maybe take a look at your sites and put some money in your budget for replanting. And rehabbing things that maybe have died over the years. And be ready to work with us and maybe the Development Review Board to update your site plan. And we've had several businesses contact us over the winter saying, I wanna get ahead of that. Can you get me my currently approved plan? And um Suzanne and I are gonna do that in the next, well, in May into June. We'll, we'll go out and be inspecting sites and trying to be proactive and helpful for those folks to say, here's what's changed and what you need to do. And you know, let's help, help you update your plans and tell you what needs to be planted and that sort of thing. So that's, th- those are the ideas that I got based on uh the reading that I've been doing and the thinking based on your conversations. What I wanna do is, is formalize those in, in written form for your next meeting. That's what I'd hope to have tonight. But uh so that you can um talk some more, if you're okay with that, next meeting about, that's not a good idea, that's a good idea. You know, winnow it down and see if you have any ideas beyond what's on the written page.
Do you see much, Alex, um in some of what you've read, um like sometimes you'll go to um. Uh like a rec path is sometimes the most explicit. You know, some community will very purposefully um. Sort of have a recreation path of some kind of runners or, or joggers or just people, you know, strolling with their young kids. And there'll be like a little station of some kind, you know, we, we, you know, like uh to do some exercise or something.
Yeah, like, like what they did on the Burlington Bike Path last year with the renovations.
Yeah, they did some of that along there. Uh we also tend to, I think, when it comes to like small kids, we, for playground space. We tend to say, okay, this is our town playground, you know, like we have sort of an area over there by the school. As opposed to, you know, life is uh varied, you know, I mean, you're on a path or something. And there's some, something that could amuse a small child, you know, uh whether it swings or some, you know, amusing piece of play equipment. I mean, even that space we've been denigrating, you know, behind um, um the Bris- Bristol Bakery. You know, if there were just two, you, you know, interesting pieces of play equipment. Directed at different ages, it suddenly jolles up the place, you know, and. Um and, and it becomes something to do. It, it doesn't always need to be a full-blown playground.
Right.
It can be just, you know, things along the way because um.
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't know that I saw anything like that in the documents that I read. And, and I, I'm trying to think of other municipal examples in the county um where you see that along paths. I think the only examples that I've seen are along rec paths, like the Burlington Bike Path with exercise stations. Um I, but I, you know, maybe you, you are all aware of others where they have installed more playful things along a path.
It certainly, it certainly adds. I mean, instead of just, you know, you come upon a maybe a smaller green space instead of just a bench. Having, having, having it be more of a destination, um.
Something to do.
I think that, I think that there's room for creativity at the, at that level to, to be able to say, hey, let's put in a bench. But let's also put in a teeter totter next to it, you know, or let's put in a, uh, I don't know, you see them sometimes in, in Burlington. It seems like all this stuff happens in Burlington. Uh let's put in a bike rack, but let's, let's make it in the shape of a giant bike lock. You know, spiraling or something like that. Something a little eclectic, a little interesting that um grabs people's attention. I, I can tell you that we have an example of a very uh small play structure here. When Green Street went in, um there was a very small little green space, you know, left that when Peter was still here, he and I were like, well. There's not a lot of green space, usable green space in this development. There's a lot of visually pleasing green space down, you know, on, on the west side, looking out towards the La Platte. But it, it's gonna be paved and it, it's floodplain. And there was this small green space and I thought, well, you know, uh mom and her daughter could get out. And throw a ball back and forth in that one spot. And uh they, they did away with that. But in its place, what they put was a swing. And it's one of these, I, I had never seen one before. It's just a big disc with arms on either side. Sort of two arms and it just goes back and forth. Um. I, I'm sure it provides endless entertainment for, you know, anyone in the five to a twelve-year-old uh age category. Cause I, I'm associating with a couple of those kids right now and there's a similar swing at Star Farm Park in Burlington. And they just love that stupid swing. And it's just one swing, so I, yeah, maybe it could be done. So I don't have any other design standards for you, and I only have those thoughts for you. I apologize for not having this in writing. I'd hope to have it for you. But my hope, my plan is to give it, give that to you with this pretty duck map next time. That's all I got on this one, Maggie.
It's good.
I like it.
Yes.
If you think of anything else, if, you know, it takes time to digest, just email me between now and the next meeting. And I can rope it in, you know, wrap it into what I'm putting together.
Well, I, I think what, what would make it a, a um, a more interesting exercise is if we each maybe come up with ideas. Of parks and green spaces in other, other towns that we've seen, anything that.
Yeah.
Um that, that works in another place to see if, you know.
That would be really cool.
Yeah, it would be.
And if you're tech savvy and you could get on Google Maps and go to the aerial view, you could, you know. Take a screenshot or print it out and bring it in or something. We could bring it up and project it on screen.
Right, we could just do a, yeah.
To say, hey, this is my favorite park in Winuski and here's why. Look at it, it's cool.
I've been, I do Instagram and so lately I've been on a tear with um great urban spaces in the world. And it's just Google Earth, it's exactly what you just said, you know, it's just plazas and squares and town greens and.
Fam- famous.
Mostly they're famous, but like I, I just did one on the Two Greens in Chelsea, say for example, from the air. And these, sort of interesting to see some of these spaces, you know, some, some are, you're apt to say, where are the trees are off? You know, stuff like that, but um, um, it is a fascinating, that's why a map like this.
It's all stone. The buildings were stone. Plaza was stone. The Caponelli was stone.
Will last a long time.
That's why a map like this, I mean, the one that you did Alex, um, is really, you know, not meaning to be too hard on ourselves as a community. But, you know, it's um, it sort of points out um the shortcomings, you know, in many ways. I mean, the real, um, and not, as I said, to be too critical, but um, you know. A lot of these spaces are fairly far afield on the perimeter of the community, which is okay. Uh, but insofar as non-play fields, um, the sort of nice viable space, you know, within access of lots of people who live in town. There isn't too much, you know, really, uh, one of the best spaces is really the space that sits right next door to us here in the town park. Our little circular.
Oh, yes, except it lacks shade.
Probably is the kind of space that could have benefited from a tree right in the middle.
Right in the middle, yeah.
Which is an easy uh critique to give it. Well, it would just sort of uh come off the tree. The tree would have like a little uh belt up there, you know, we just.
What Heinsberg has in spades. Are, are rural, rural parks, but really our town forests, right? So we have two enormous town forests that are very well developed with recreational infrastructure. And there are a lot of towns in this state and probably, you know, cities and more urban areas that don't have anything like that. And so we're, we're blessed, but within our little growth area, it, it's, it's, it's a little different.
When I was rehabbing from my hip surgery, I spent a lot of time at DPT. And most of their exercise equipment is faced out to lot one, yeah, or to the west. And um, I would see a lot of people walk down the sidewalk there and walk to the, the space that I think Brett owns. And just stand there and look to the west and kind of, sort of recreate, sometimes with people who are smoking cigarettes. But they seem to be really, or I don't know what they were smoking, but they were smoking.
As of July first, it could be something else.
I know, well, I'm sure it was a few times, and, but I saw that a lot. And then, and I just kept, and I look over behind the building that's been redone. And um, it's, I just think that's a really lovely space and, and you do see people walking around there.
Right, imagine if something was in that space and they didn't just walk around it, they walked into it.
The sad story I've heard is that tree, that big tree we all refer to is not healthy. Does the town have a landscape care? I mean, we can literally get a recommendation as to what we should do, it might cost some money to help with that tree.
It's an ash.
But they've been trying to save the tree out here too. And, and the tree out here, John, um, on the corner by the greenhouse.
It's also an ash.
They've been trying to save that, there's been some work done on that.
Oh, lots, but it's on its way out the door now.
I think it's not gonna make it, but at least they're trying.
John, you should make a citizen's appeal to your town tree warden.
I will talk to Paul.
He's on the endangered species committee for the state now, so you could just tell him, you know, we potentially have an endangered tree in the middle of what's gonna be our town.
No, it's very, it's very nice that it's there, uh, it's a.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of people notice it. I don't see people picnicking under it though.
I haven't, but I, I just think that. I think that there's a lot that could be done there, but I don't, couldn't tell you what to do. I, I just think that it's, has a good future, that area, even though it's small.
So when the design standards, could you? I guess you could, right, if, so if you said usable green space maybe connects to green space on another lot. So right, so I, I feel like when we, you know, like at the DRB, right, you always look at projects in that one little box of the lot. And that's all you see and you don't really get the complete, you know, how does it fit? And it would be good if we could figure out like to make those parts and pieces fit with the adjacent lots or what's going there. And I think they're, you know, like when Haystack Crossing, they talked about a little bit like how it would connect into Heinsberg Phase Two and things like that. And I just think if we had it somehow quantified it, cause if I look at a map, you know, when I think about like along the river, you'd see a very clear kinda. Where that would be just a make sense green repairing spaces we're talking about. But have they designed that on either side to kinda, I don't know, make sense, if you will?
Well, I think the official map serves in that capacity quite a lot, you know, something for both the board and applicants to see. But we have to, we have to update it, um, and put more teeth in it. And I think John mentioned that last time and.
Wasn't there one for that development?
Part of Green Street?
In Green Street, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's that, it's, it's that whole area to the west of the project leading down to the La Platte River. It's all uh, it's all floodplain, but it's pretty.
Yes, very. It'd be nice if there was some trees along the road, I think.
They block the trackers.
They're on the north side, so it doesn't matter.
They're all on the north side, it could be a cedar hedge, just as thick as the one on.
Not to digress too far, but the trees down by the La Platte on Charlotte Road on that same property, but closer to the river. There's a whole cops of trees that's doing really well down there. It's just the, it's just the street trees that are along Charlotte Road on that property have been anemic. But I've, I've worked here for fifteen years, they looked anemic when I started, they still look anemic.
They have it grow.
Also deciduous trees and they have trunks and so you're driving past, you're walking past, biking past. You're looking under all of these blank. Twigs and you're, there's no screening.
Yeah, well, they weren't intended to be screened, that's for sure.
That's what they could have, I, I think that was part of the project to put the trees in.
Oh, right, but I'm thinking of the ones on this side of the road were planted by.
Now we are digressing, I'm sorry, no, the trees along Charlotte Road, John, on the, on the south side of Charlotte Road. Those were there long before that development project went in.
We're talking about the solar trackers.
Yeah, yeah, those, those trees have been there, they were, they were there, I don't know, ten years before the solar trackers ever went in. They just, yeah, they're just in bad shape.
They were planted by a group of people in town, I remember Sally Keller being involved in that, but I don't know who. The group was that did it, it was a lot of work, it's too bad they haven't grown.
Yeah, even if they had, they wouldn't do it.
Maybe they weren't right, yeah, I don't. Haven't done much, you're right, anemic.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, it's, it's really interesting, this sort of uh, the task is on you Alex, but um, it's not. I don't think it's an easy one necessarily, I mean, I've been looking on Maggie's screen all night and she's had up. Uh pornographic, no.
And Marie never said anything.
No, no, Marie, she's a picture of discretion. I was gonna say pornographic urban design, but anyway.
Ooh, we need a definition of that.
That's not a fair thing to say, but she's had a particular development uh proposed uh in our town on her screen. Most of this night, and actually it's a really great little project to look at, um, without maybe DRB people nearby. Um, because um, it, it doesn't, it doesn't address, uh, say like the big uh village green space. Say for example, like people, you know, talked about lot one or lot fifteen or something within the Black Rock proposal. But it definitely calls attention to, okay, so where are the real workable, smaller scale spaces? That um, um, you know, make something sing in a nice way. And uh, the very issue is, you know, when you look at lots of really good little parks and good little spaces. It's as if they thought about the park and the little space first. And then they configured everything around the special nature of that space. As opposed to what's illustrated on the screen, which is like they filled everything in and they put it around parking lots, basically. Um, is sort of the attitude that um is on display there. So it, it's a great little case study actually, and, and not to pick on them too much. But um, that's kind of, you know, let's figure out where all the buildings go. And then try to figure out how to make something meaningful somewhere, as opposed to making something meaningful first. And then figuring out how the buildings configure themselves around it.
Yeah, well, I think that's why you wanted these, that's why you wanted part of this design standard effort to be about green space. To try to address that.
Yeah, can we say that?
We can say lots of things, there's lots of wonderful preamble and introductory comments in every, every municipality's code. On civic spaces, there's that kind of stuff, so we can absolutely say that, yes.
But if we decide where we want this green space, should we figure out what we would like in it?
I think we should be as specific as we can and knowing that we will never know exactly.
Size you would need depending on what you wanted in it.
And that's where I think having the map helps, cause you'll be able to say, we don't need a rec field in it, we got enough of those, what we need in it is this. Or in this particular spot, what we need is that.
But the rec committee would tell you that they don't have enough records.
I don't think they would actually, once, once this year comes to a close, those business net rec fields are gonna be the cat's meow. I mean, two full size, multi-use rec fields and a Little League baseball diamond. Plus Lemon Park, plus the field back here, I mean, that's.
That's all coming online this spring?
It's this summer, yeah, the, the, the last two fields are supposed to be built this summer and into the fall, they won't be usable. For another year after that, because they gotta seed in, but uh, yeah, I think we'll be, I think we will have, we will have. We will have achieved what we've been trying to for a long time with that project.
All right, any other comments on? Green space or? Light green space or emerald green space?
Not to extend for a long discussion, but what do we see happening? We get this back, this material that Alex is gonna put together for us. Are we gonna spend another meeting talking about this? Or are we gonna try to kind of move that along, make that decision? And if so, where are we going next? Are we gonna look at another map that's gonna show something, the economic map of Heinsberg or whatever?
So, so John, my, my hope is that you would look at additional.
Next and are we wrapping it up next?
We've got a list of design standards to work through, green spaces is the first, we can look at the list and decide what we wanna do.
Where we wanna go next.
That was my hope was to just put, take those categories, this is just the first one and, and feed you design standards for those other categories. And we can look at whatever maps help, help in that regard, but.
But we'll, we'll just need to pick where we go next, I guess. Which one, which one do we feel is most critical?
As opposed to just coming in and sitting around and staring at each other?
Yeah, right, that too.
Yeah, plans are good. Guys and their maps, I mean.
I know, they're fighting over them.
You left, you were making fun of my map. All right, and whether we'll get through it all next meeting, who knows, maybe, who knows?
That's for future you and me to figure out.
Right. Okay, so um. So I guess we'll, you know, review other possible design standards, but I think, yeah.
Not ready yet.
All right, so we're good on that. Um, let's take a look at minutes. Any changes? Good job, good job. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second, okay, all in favor? Beautiful. Okay, so. So other business, um, update on the.
Right, I sent you, uh, well, let me give you the update first, the DRB started the Hannaford review on April seventeenth. It was continued to the May fifteenth meeting, they will take it up more then. They got through most of the stormwater related stuff on that first meeting. And the May fifteenth meeting is, been advertised as focusing on traffic uh issues. But, the reason I put this on your agenda was that um, our attorney, our town attorney changed his mind about the scope of the review. Initially, he was agreeing with Hannaford's attorney that the review should be limited to just traffic and stormwater. About a week before the hearing, he changed his mind and said, no, I think it's better and more uh prudent for the town. To review all of the relevant regulatory standards under site plan. So, uh Mitch, our development review coordinator, uh, had written a staff report just focused on traffic and stormwater. He, he's, he'll be writing a new one that walks through all of the various standards. And, in the last go around, um, the pri- the previous planning commission had a pretty strong opinion about. Um, the project's compliance or lack thereof with the official map. Since the pro- the property in question is indicated on the official map as being a place for a future community facility. So, I provided to you in your packets, the feedback that the planning commission back then provided in two thousand and ten. And then reaffirmed in two thousand and eleven during the Hannaford review. And I don't want you to talk about it tonight in great depth, I just wanted to alert you to the fact that if you're interested. You, this planning commission, in commenting, maybe on the official map issue. It's, it's germane to the DRB review and there'll be, you have time, you can talk about it on May ninth. And um, hash it out if you wanna um, comment or not. Yes, you should leave.
Should I, is that, no?
Now we can all talk about Dennis, oh no.
So what I, I, I'd like to add to that too, so I, you're, you know, I was looking at this and, and yeah, the planning commission, they said, okay. Said what they said and then they reaffirmed, but I also think it's important to reaffirm what the DRB concluded. Right, so they basically, uh, in their November, when they made their final decision, right, whatever was back in twenty twelve before all the stuff. Was that they respected with the planning commission and the village steering commission, what everybody had to say about the official map and that's great. But they basically said they can't agree with it because the official map is not specific as to what needs to go on there. Because they claimed that's a farmer's market, good enough.
Well, I think.
Dude, I mean, maybe I'm paraphrasing.
No, I, I think you're almost there, but yet, I think what they found was, the official map says, one of the community facilities. That is scheduled for this space is a farmer's market. And the applicant has proposed area and shared use of parking lot and water and bathroom facilities for a farmer's market. Therefore, the project complies with the official map because they have accommodated a farmer's market. Which was one of the community facilities indicated. a farmer's market, which was one of the community facilities indicated on the map. Now, the planning commission and the village steering committee both said that's not what the intent was. And the DRB was split. Their vote was four to three on this approval. And I'm, I guess I can't say with a hundred percent certainty that they were split four to three on the official map question, but I'm pretty sure they were. So I I think the official map issue was um there was not a unanimous feeling on the DRB, but there was a majority feeling that that the applicant had complied.
Well, so can I, so the part that was just this last sentence, if I can read it. And it was section two of their conclusion. It just goes through what you just described. And the final sentence is, the board cannot concur with the official map compliance issues raised by the planning commission and the village steering commission without clear, clear guidance from the regulation itself, i.e. official map, as to what was specifically envisioned for this particular location. So you know, I just, I I guess I'm afraid that if we reaffirm, reaffirm, or don't reaffirm, do we have to address their clear statement of, you know, we need a clear and I don't know if us recommending what that clear vision should be for lot fifteen, if that would even be able to be taken into account because the official map I assume would have to be updated and
Yeah, in order to address that head on, we need to update the official map. That's part of this process. We aim to do that. Joey Adans is not here, but he's, he was there for all of this and, you know, continues to bang his fist like we gotta make this official map more specific. You're not gonna do that in time to make a difference.
It doesn't matter now.
So what you can do is provide feedback to the DRB, but it's gonna be in the same vein. It's gonna be taken in the same way, I think, that the original feedback was, which is, we respect it, we'll listen to it. But it is not what the regulation is. It is a statement of what the regulation's intent was.
Right, but if we if the planning commission were to give a recommendation as to what maybe we think it should be, they could take that under consideration. And I don't necessarily mean, you know, it must be X community thing. It could still be a farmer's market, but I'm thinking more of like the location of where that green space is in relation to the plan and it kinda goes to the design plans, right? So we talked about all those things, like the green spaces connected or, or I'm saying it, how does it fit in with the overall space? So, and I don't wanna go down too far, but basically my concern is where they say the farmer's market is was a purchased piece of land in the back that is next to a scrapyard. Um, the back of Obashan Plaza and then a butts of parking lot.
Well, the the farmer's market is essentially a couple of traffic cones.
You're right.
On the edge of a parking lot, that's
You know, maybe a recommendation is take that size parcel and move it up to connect it with that little sliver part on one sixteen and then give them parking in the back there or something, so that at least it's usable.
So this is all good stuff to talk about. But I would recommend you talk about it at your next meeting, so it can be a regular agenda item. The community can know you're talking about it. People can show up and argue with you if they want, Merrily, you know, um might be the only one.
But if we have that conversation, is it even anything the DRB could act on? So it'd be great for us to talk about wants.
So I'll just reiterate, I I think they're gonna, I think that they they want, they want your feedback. They they were happy to get it last time and the board was split as to whether to act on that feedback. It's a different board. They might act differently.
We also have had, how many years, when, when was that decision made? Two thousand
Two thousand twelve.
Twelve. We we've now six more years of, I would say, information about that particular location in terms of what would be most appropriate to use that location for, for our town.
We have a lot more information.
And if that doesn't give us a way to look at it anew, I I I mean, I think everyone wants to do that. So I'd say, great, next waiting, next meeting.
Let's put it on the agenda.
Okay, I will do that.
But greater specificity, what I'm hearing in the overall is that um a whole lot more specificity around. And it gets into the whole form-based zoning business, actually. Uh, the more specific you can be about uh the official map, its uses and delineating and defining what those uses are is an extremely helpful. It then makes that an extremely helpful document, both to people who are uh wanting to develop properties in our community and and giving them guidance as to just
Yeah, I I really do believe that um Hannaford as an applicant would have appreciated a lot more specificity in that regard. Cause unlike some applicants that come to us and say, I've got an idea for a project, can we talk about it and sort of understand, you know, where things are going? Hannaford's team researched everything without talking to us and said, based on everything we've read, we think this, this is the best we could possibly design. So if we had written something down that was a little bit better or more specific, maybe they would have designed with that in mind. So I totally agree, yeah. It's, it's to everyone's benefit to have it be more specific. That's all I had, Maggie, for other business items.
All right.
Never mind, after the meeting.
Yeah, I gotta go.
Okay, uh most adjourned? So be it. Thanks, everyone.
Do we know anything about Joe?
Thank you.